Good evening. We have met in closed session and we have a quorum established. So let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Do we start with the approval of the minutes?
Correct.
We have a motion to approve the minutes?
All right.
I'll do that.
Second.
(laughing)
Terry moves.
Julia seconds.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Rick Cavanado.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we're going to have the reception of visitors. We have two opportunities for reception of visitors. The first one is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. The second is to address the board about any item they choose. Would anybody like to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to recommendations and reports of the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Cupka. I will introduce Mark Stalyn, the controller, and he will present the third quarter financial report.
Okay.
Okay. Maybe you can throw the exhibits up on the front here and I'll turn the lights down. Overall, the, again, just a real quick overview is things are running pretty well as expected. We're up a little bit in terms, if you look at the difference line on the bottom of that exhibit, about $600,000. Roughly, you know, the fund balances normally goes up in the third quarter because our revenues are all collected and we have a small increase each year in those and our expenditures are generally not fully expended and many times we have a lesser increase on the expenditure side. So we expect that balance to go up a tiny bit each time at this third quarter mark. I guess we can flip to the revenues and we'll really get into some of the details. If we just focus on the top section, really, that's the combined group here. Property taxes from our 2012 levy are completely collected, of course. We received those in June and September. So it's easy for us to see how we collect all those by now. Replacement taxes is a positive thing in that it is up. We did budget for it to go up. We expect to meet or exceed that line by the end of the year. So it's kind of a volatile, maybe even fickle line item in that it goes up and down sometimes without a direct relationship to the economy because it's been growing, but it's a positive thing for us because it's a discretionary funding source that we can use to help cover costs in other areas. Interest income, if you look at the third line down there, interest, the budget this year, $147,000 compared to last year's $240,000. We fell short of that $240,000 last year. Rates have really not moved. We have aggressively gone after tax anticipation warrants and have a couple more this year, but really the total revenue from that is only about $20,000 even with this market still being so tough right now. Really, there's no really major issues here to go after. Registration fees are a higher percentage collected, but again, note that the budget was discounted compared to last year. So we have those issues where registration fees are being impaired by the amount of waivers that we have this year, but on a percentage collection basis, we're doing a little bit better than we had.
Mark, I'm sorry to interrupt. What is the difference then between the registration fees and the tuition?
Tuition is more summer camps and summer school tuition. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, he's talking about revenue.
And so registration fees are really the registration textbook and now lab fees that we have in that account. And actually, we always had lab fees under that category, so to compare to last year it'd be the same grouping. And then really, I think we have federal aid, which is roughly the same. General state aid is down as a comparative basis. We might be short in some of those accounts. They're prorating some of those. The state now, instead of just deferring the payments and holding them back and being later, took, which apparently was a better option for them, and that's just to prorate it and just say, "You're done." So that's happening a little bit there. Overall, I think in terms of the budget, we're 95% total collected compared to last year. We're really pretty much on track. Last year, we were okay as well. If we move to the expenditure grouping.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh. Yeah, you get my...
Mark, just a quick question about the state. Are you saying that maybe we will be prorated at 69% or are we expecting more?
No, 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 no. That's just the current collection rate.
Right.
And we'll still have, we still have general state coming in. We still have other categorical coming in. So, no, we won't be prorated at 69% overall. But some of them, they are, some of the special ed reimbursements are being prorated for residential placements, things like that, for some high-cost kids that we have and some high-cost areas that in the past were in the 92% to 95% prorated area. And they could be down in the 60% to 50% range.
Okay.
Again, it's a smaller part of our total budget.
Right.
And a smaller part of that line item, but it's, these are areas that they never really attacked in the past or held back money on. Those were kind of, they were somewhat sacred cows in the past, and so they're starting to go into those a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. On the expenditure side, again, we look a little bit better compared to last year at 69%, but there's a little bit of an explanation that we need. The expenditures last year were up, elevated a little bit last year by about $500,000 or so because there were some insurance reimbursable expenditures that we had in the capital, in the operation of the maintenance fund. And so we were up a little bit last year, and so my explanation last year, when the 71% compared to the prior year's 69%, that was the reason, and we did collect those monies and got reimbursed for it by the end of the fiscal year last year. But overall, things are running very, very true to the normal expectations. Capital outlay is one of the most volatile areas because depending on the project or the nature of the expenditure, we might spend it all in the summer or a good portion of it in the first part of the fiscal year. So there's a lot of volatility in that comparison, but overall, the total budget is pretty much on track. The one item that is more of a concern, and Scott just told me we had another move-in transfer today, so things change, and special ed tuition, it is a very tough area to budget because you can have, and we have had, a good number of move-ins this year of high-needs students. And so at the preliminary level, where some of this will get reimbursed, but at the preliminary level, we were up 50% in that account, which is a big account, one for the outside placement, residential placements and for kids that are in high-needs areas. So we will probably run over budget by $200,000 on that one line item, but we do have some other line items that are running behind and under budget, and we're going to try and hold tight on those and move money by the end of the year to cover that, move the budget amounts so that we can stay within the total budget. And that's in a nutshell, and I know I ran through that quick, but any questions you have, I'd be happy to...
I'm sorry, Mark. One more on the reimbursement for the tuition. Do you anticipate we will get 70% reimbursed?
I think they were, they're saying as much as 50%. And right now, that's when we set the budget next year, that's what we're going to probably be using as a target unless we hear a better number.
So that 3.3 number, we might be reimbursed a million and a half?
Oh, and the...
For the tuition.
No, because not all of that is outplaced students. A lot of that is SaaSed.
Right.
It's kids that are just there on a tuition basis, but not residential placements.
Not residential.
It's residential placements that are very expensive.
Right.
The one today, I think, was in the range of, on an annualized basis, $90,000 just for residential. So, and we've had the sum as high as $350,000 a year outplaced. So it's a very expensive area where one student can really tear up your best-planned budget.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Textbooks?
Yes. Dr. Cupka, we, for several years now, because of the availability of titles and materials to review, we've approved, actually approved textbooks several times during the school year. We have a set of textbooks for final adoption later on tonight in the action item part of the agenda, but we have added a textbook which we'd like to put on display for the public to review for at least 30 days. Primarily, that's based on enrollment in a course that we have not had enrollment in before. We found we needed to have a textbook for that course. So, Ms. Cardy, do you have anything to add to that?
Other than we're very excited to be able to run the course. We did look at textbooks. It was about four years ago when we first proposed the course, and we did not move to adopting one because we weren't running the course. And I'm glad we didn't because in the meantime, new additions have come out, and so we're running the course and we're excited. So we'd really like to put it on display and hopefully adopt textbooks.
And in case you are curious as to what the course is, it's AP Art.
AP art history.
Art history.
AP art history.
AP art history. Excuse me. Thank you.
Can we take that class?
I just want to audit it, though.
Why not?
Okay.
Pass mail?
Pass mail.
Employee medical and dental premiums?
Thank you, Dr. Cupka. Each year, the district, as an insurance committee made up of employees from all different groups, and they meet throughout the year to evaluate their progress of health and dental benefits and the cost of such. We come to this point in the year with recommendations, and several years ago, the board asked that we review the recommendations before they're offered and voted on and offered to the staff for selection prior to going home for the summer. So Mark is going to make a brief report about that.
Yes, and the medical and dental plans have been running very well. The exhibit that you have that shows the amount of reserve, you'll see that it did grow in dollar amount, but it did shrink a small amount as a percentage. So we are slowly starting to go the other direction with the reserve, which is actually good. We, last few years, we anticipated 5% increases in the plan, medical plans in particular, and figured, "Let's just eat up the reserves a little bit because they're getting higher than we need to have." But then our experience has been coming in below that, even that 5% trend. So part of that, I think we can actually, for this particular year, credit that to Affordable Care Act. I think there's, if you look in, if you, on Meet the Press in the last few weeks, nationally, healthcare costs are being held back for whatever reason tied to this program, tied to this. So everybody's kind of watching these costs, and I think they are trying to police them a little bit better in terms of their contracts. So it's been very tight nationally. And so we weren't surprised to see the HMO plan, which is not a self-funded plan. It's a conventional program where we have HMO Illinois and HMO Blue Advantage, which are two different networks totally administered and run by Blue Cross, fairly popular for our employees, but those plans are going up by 5%, I'm sorry, 5.9%, roughly just about 6%, I think, is what you have in your documents. It was technically really 5.9%. And 3.5% of that, though, is actually for fees required by the Affordable Care Act. The actual increase is closer to 2.5% for that particular plan. So it's, otherwise, there are other plans. We do expect them, the claims to grow by trend, but we're leaving the premiums flat again and expect to spend down the reserve. We don't really need anything more than a 50% reserve is on the high end of our expectation. The low end would be somewhere in the 20% to 25% range where I would be most comfortable, but I'm very comfortable with 50. Obviously, it gives us some premium shock in case things do change, and that's just the term we use. If you get a 20% increase in one year, you can eat up reserve a little bit and feather that increase over a couple of years. And we have in the past, every seven, eight, nine years, had a 15%, 16% increase that we've had to do that with. So particularly after so many years of not increasing the premium, it just, you know, the law of odds, it catches up to you and you have, can have a pretty bad year sometimes. So, but that's a recommendation. We do want to be able to start our open enrollments here in May, and we are obligated to indicate to the board what our expectations are, so that if there's concerns, we can hear that. But I'm very proud to be able to say that we've been able to maintain these programs, very high-quality programs that our employees enjoy.
Questions?
This is just an informational...
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Nominal changes to policies due to press?
Thank you, Nancy. As the board is aware, we've been reviewing the board policy now for over five years, and we're coming to the point where we've really gone through every section.
Wow.
With a couple of outliers that we still have to address, but we've virtually gone through every section, and now it's a matter of reviewing those periodically. And we get a quarterly report from the Illinois Association of School Boards called the PRESS, and the PRESS is an acronym for something. I don't quite recall what it means, but in essence, what the PRESS does is gives us an overview of policy changes as a result of new law, new legislation, and court cases. And subsequently, that could affect any of the policy areas or any of the different, I think we have seven or eight different categories. It could affect any one of those in a given time. But because we've worked at aligning our policies to the School Board Association, that's relatively straightforward to do. Our practice has been to bring these policies to the board for approval in the same way or the changes to the board for approval in the same way we always have, but in fact, some of these changes are basically one word. For example, change from teacher certification to teacher licensure. And our thinking was that if, I mean, I'm speaking for the policy committee.
Right.
But the thinking was if the board is okay with the policy committee signing off on changes of that sort, then we wouldn't bother the board with them. And if any, if a change of any substance was recommended, of course, we'd bring that forward, but things like a single word or a single name or, and we do have some of those, that the recommendation is not to spend the board's time on that. That's basically the presentation, and Mike isn't here, but Rick is aware of this, and we're interested in the board's input about it.
Wanted to ask the board, just kind of a streamline, because some of them have just been one word. So it's not like we're rewriting...
Different content or something.
Yeah, that would then come to the board. It was just mostly the upkeep now that everything is starting to fall underneath this umbrella of this master plan that you've been working on. Nancy wanted before me, and Mike and I have been working on. So that was kind of the...
So would there be some sort of benchmark, like if it's going to be two words, we won't bring it to the board, or three words, or will it just be? I would trust your judgment.
Yeah.
Or do you have some firm notion in mind as to what it would be?
I think our expectation is that you trust the policy committee's judgment.
I certainly would.
And that, if there is a sense that there's a substance to the change, then we'd bring it forward.
Right.
If there isn't, then...
And like I said, Mike's not here, but we had talked about this in our last meeting. Just, because we're to the point now where the changes are just minor.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
So it's, and that kind of, that was the thought behind it. There was no other thing other than just trying to bring all these things up, because sometimes there's, how many changes? Like, there might be 10 or 12 different one-word changes, so that would be 10 policies that have to be discussed and read and voted on, and first reading, second reading, and all that. So...
I don't think I would have a problem with that, but I think from a legal standpoint, we're still on the hook for all these changes. We still have a responsibility, and my only concern is that even if it's a single-word change or this, that, we're still ultimately responsible as a seven-person board, and I don't know that we want to begin the precedent, no matter how tedious or laborious this, you know, exercise may be, that it's still our responsibility to pass it as a group of seven and not as a policy committee of two. That's my only concern.
Where they could just be included? If they were, like you said, a word or two change, then on the next meeting, they could just be attached as to what they were?
Could we make...
Do anything the board desires?
Instead of a first and second reading?
It's pretty open.
Instead of a first and second reading?
Could we make a separate category then?
Mm-hmm.
Where they would maybe slide into that category where maybe it wouldn't have to be a two review. It could be just a one, where it would come in from the policy committee. We would slide it underneath that umbrella, and then you guys could peruse it before the next meeting and say, "I like the change. I don't have a problem with it." And if you did, then we could send it back to the committee.
Absolutely.
Then to review.
Because then you have at least, you know, seven sets of eyes that can take a look at that.
Mark, you think, I don't think that's a problem. And like, anything major, we're not going to slide underneath the umbrella. It would just be very minor, minor changes. And maybe do that then, and just slide it, have a separate category for...
So did you see if in FYI?
Right.
If you have a problem?
Because then all seven eyes have seen it. I mean, seven...
Okay. And then maybe you would see something, say, "Hey, send it back to discuss," and then we would.
Right.
Or if you want to do it quarterly rather than, you know, every meeting.
Because the good thing is, we're not making the changes. It's the lawyers at the other end that are recommending these changes. So I don't have a problem with that. I think that would be...
And it would save you time if you just do it every quarter or whatever, if there's any new ones.
Sounds good.
Mark, I think that's, I think Mike would be fine with that, too.
So it's saving the board's time.
That was the interest of it, was just trying to streamline that process.
Do we have to vote on that?
No.
No.
Any dissenting views?
No, I think that sounds like a nice...
I think it's a great idea. The only thing I'd like to add is that really, board members, long before some of us came on this board, and staff members have been slogging through this stuff for years, and just, it was a huge undertaking. So congratulations.
Right, yeah.
I just think it's wonderful to thank you.
It wasn't just us. We're catching the tail end of it, I think.
I know, but different...
It started in 2009.
Yeah.
Wow, five years.
I mean, if you tally the hour staff put into this, I...
Yes. Found some that were from the 1970s.
Seventies, yeah.
Classic.
The seventies were a wonderful time.
Classic policies.
Come on.
Mark wore mutton chops to the...
I did.
Okay. Thank you, board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Freedom of information, yes?
The district received three requests, freedom of information requests in the past month. All three were fulfilled in correspondence from Mark Stalyn's office.
Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item that any member of the board wishes to discuss further on the consent agenda?
If we could, Dr. Cupka, Mr. Tice, I think we have a couple late adds to the personal report.
We do. In the appointment certified area, between when the original was sent out and this evening, we were able to bring in two more people to sign contracts for next year. So one of them is Jory Burtnett, who will be the new department chair and special services at North High School. So she's the second from the bottom in that certified list. And then Greg Hensel, bottom on the list, will be returning to South in the .9 band position at South High School.
Oh, that's great. Good.
So those were our late additions. We tried to get everybody in before the Friday memo went out, but couldn't quite do it.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Any comments, questions?
No.
Everybody for a vote?
I saw move that we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, Terry moves. Julia seconds.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Rick Cavanado.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Moving on to Section 8, recommendations for action, approval for recommended textbooks to go on display.
That applies to the textbook we discussed about 10 minutes ago, seeking approval to put it on display. It'll be on display for at least 30 days. I believe that requires that it won't be brought forward for actual vote until the June board meeting because of the, the May board meeting is before 30 days from today.
That still allows time to, once we approve it, to purchase it and get it in place?
Yeah. You don't have to buy 1,000 copies. It's actually Mrs. Beckman, we're...
We're all good.
Good.
Don't need a special printing. Okay.
Okay, resolution of 2013 tax rates.
We have...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Got to vote on it.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended textbook for display.
Thank you.
I will second it.
Thank you, Deb. All those, this we can do in favor of. All those in favor of? Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on to the resolution of the 2013 tax rates.
Okay. We, the board approved the levy last fall, and now we have to finalize the different funds that the levy will be distributed across. And Mark has written a report about this, and I will let him give an oral report at this time.
Okay, well, actually, we're not changing our total tax levy at this point. We're just reallocating it between individual funds to maybe maximize the management of it. And so you'll see that our total rate doesn't change, but if we did not have tax caps in place, we, based on our levy request and the statutory pieces that would be added to it for loss and cost, there's a piece that the county would add to your levy to allow for any loss due to appeals or other factors, we would be able to levy $71.6 million. But because of the caps and the way that the tax caps work, and we expected this, our total levy is limited to $70,843,215. And rather than have the county spread that, the difference across all of the individual funds, we would prefer to just have it taken, in this case, from the educational fund, which we have allowed to grow. We did that at the expense of some other funds, in particular, the building fund, which has a large deficit. And so we would not want them to apply this shortfall into, across the board, we'd prefer it to go into the one fund that we vindicated there, and that's the educational fund this year. And so we were required to respond to the county within a week. Always get it to last week of March or so, and so we were able to do that. It falls in between our board meetings, and we've responded and given them this directive, but we ask for adoption or ratification by the Board of Education.
Pretty straightforward.
Any questions or...
I'll move the adoption of the tax rates as they've been presented.
Julia moves. Terry seconds.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Cavanado.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
No.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye.
Okay, we've got some capital bids, capital improvement bids.
Hey, Mr. Colletier is up the bat.
Thank you, Dr. Colletier.
He has four different bids, and I'll let him go through each one of them. I think we'll have to approve each individually.
That's correct. Four. And coming early, because of the delivery time on these, I'll go through each one. We'll start with the pool dehumanification system at North High School. So our architect and engineers developed the specifications and drawings for these. We went out to bid, and two vendors indicated interest. Actually, this is, these units are, only three companies make them, and two out of the three put in bids. Complex project. We did some site visits, visited two campuses. We wanted to get a good understanding of the operations, energy savings, and longevity of the equipment. So came back, and we chose two out of the three that we really thought were good for the schools, because next year, we'll probably be doing South High School. So we wanted to get a unit that we could possibly use again for next year as we go out to bid. This is for the units only. The remainder of the construction work, we'll bring back to you in early May. 10-week delivery time, so these will get in around July 1st if we get them ordered right away. Two-week construction preparation for the installment. Want to note that we, if you remember a couple months back, we... Want to note that we, if you remember, a couple months back, we signed and filled out a maintenance grant, we received that, $50,000 worth of funding came back already, so we used that towards this project. With that said, our board approved the low bid submitted by Temperature Equipment Corporation for replacement of pool dehumidification units at North High, in the amount of $217,800.
Jim, can you tell us how old the current units are, and what the necessity is for this new one?
Eighty-four, 30-years-old, deterioration, these are huge units, they're 10,000 pounds apiece, there's two units at each auditorium of the schools, so, big units, and we've been putting a lot of money into them the last few years. At North High School, last year, we put a condensing unit, that was well over 20,000, so, they're falling apart, so we need to get them done. Better energy savings, too.
Can't put Band-Aids on bad stuff.
No, you can't.
I think it's great that we got a $50,000 grant for this, too.
Yeah.
Very happy to get it.
And I don't know how much time and effort that took to put that together for the grant, because some of those, I know that they're, you know, but wow, okay, if it was a couple of hours' work and, you know, $50,000, I mean, kudos, that's excellent, thank you.
That's great.
I move that we take the bid from Temperature Equipment Corporation, for the dehumidifiers for the pools, pool at North.
I'll second that.
Terry moves, Julia seconds.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Julia Buckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Nancy Cupca?
Aye.
Theater seating.
Wow, another one that really needs to be done.
Okay, you've been into Little Theater at South.
Yeah.
We put together the bid documents for this, it's replacement of the Little Theater seating at South High School. I'll go through the scope quickly, full replacement of all seats, what we've had the last few years is breaking seats, worn, costly repairs, we're putting money into these, they're falling apart. The new seating will add an additional 10 seats to the current 120 capacity, so we're adding 10, a couple are ADA, too. New seating will also have a tablet arm, and the reason for this is, South High School uses this area as a function for testing, and sometimes for educational space, so, they'll have a testing arm on the side that pulls up, so each seat will have that, as they use it throughout the course of the year. This bid price came within our budgeted estimate for the project, so, actually, all of them did. So, we urged the board to approve the low bid submitted by Hertz Furniture, for replacement of the Little Theater seating at South High School, in the amount of $31,421.87.
Very good.
I do have one question about that.
Sure.
And this, this company is located out in New Jersey, I see, with another bid from another company that's like, right here. Is there going to be any problem with, I mean, just as far as logistics-wise, with delivery and being able to be in contact with this company, should the need arise, just because of, you know, them coming, you know, with-
I've had many meetings with Hertz, they have a representative out here, I don't foresee any issues with the company, I've worked with them before, previous district, I'm actually happy with their work.
That's fine, that was, that was my question, if you've worked with them before, that's great, I just, that was my question, when there was a couple others that were real close by, thank you.
Considering there's only, what, $11 difference between them?
It's very close.
Yeah, it was very close, and that's why, that's why I asked, I just thought maybe it would be easier to take the one from here, but, okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the low bid submitted by Hertz Furniture for replacement Little Movie Theater at South High.
I'll second.
Rick moves, Deb seconds.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Julia Buckman?
Aye.
Nancy Cupca?
Aye.
Fritters.
Okay, number three, also, we prepared bid documents for replacement of kitchen unit at North High School, it's a pass-through cooler between the kitchen area and the serving area. This equipment's really old, it's 25-plus years, constantly putting money into it, it's deteriorated. We worked with Aramark to specify the appropriate one to replace it, they were great in helping us. Also, this bid is under budgeted amount in our capital plan, so with that said, we urged the board to approve the low bid submitted by Stafford Smith Incorporated, for the replacement of the kitchen equipment at North High, in the amount of $24,298.49.
$49 cents, great.
And it should be much more energy efficient, also.
It should be, yes.
Very good, so moved.
I'll second it.
I had a question about that, too.
Go ahead.
I know we've been doing a lot of kitchen replacements, so I'm just, just, for the sake of asking, was the last, the last, just re-jog my memory here, the last kitchen replacement things were for South, though, correct? Because we did ovens?
Actually, in the last three years, we did two ovens, one at North and one at South, and that'll be the fourth one here, and we also did a serving area where, it was right, the cooling and heating component for when they served the food, we replaced that at North High School last year.
Okay, that's right. I knew there was a lot of kitchen things, and I, yeah.
There was.
You know, and they're such large-
And regrettably, they're big-ticket items.
They really are.
You know, institutional-
One thing specific to the ovens is that we're changing the food delivery from fried to baked, more, so, there's even more, so we're going to actually beef up the number of ovens that we have overall, I think, so, that's part of, french fries in particular are going to be baked going forward.
Well, and, and it's cleaner, really.
Mm-hmm.
Less chance of somebody getting hurt.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, do your vote.
I, it's been moved and seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. Call it, Julie.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Julia Buckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca?
Aye.
Ovens.
Blodgett ovens.
Boy.
The fourth one. We also prepared bid documents and released them for bid, for replacement of two ovens, one at North, I'm sorry, three, three ovens, one at North and two at South, so, three total. As Mark Stalyn just said, these ovens are partly replacement of two, and then an additional one at South to suffice for the baking instead of frying, specifically the french fries, so they'll accommodate the needs for this in the two schools. Past two years, as I said, we've purchased these Blodgett ovens, they're exceptional pieces of equipment, we've had no problems with them, so, good success, we wanted to stick with that specification. Once again, the bid amount was under what we had budgeted in the capital plan, so with that said, we urged the Board of Education to approve the lowest bidder, Olympic Store Fixtures Incorporated, for replacement of kitchen equipment, in the amount of $42,927.63.
What does this mean with the alternate of 20,000?
The, I'm sorry, let me explain that, the alternate was a complete different oven that we did not specify, they did not bid on the Blodgett oven, they put in something else, and we did not accept it.
I agree.
It wouldn't have done the job.
I've done a lot of work with Blodgett.
They're good, it really is-
Great oven.
...of equipment.
And this bid is for the total of all three?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, so moved that we take Olympic Store Fixtures for the ovens. Are seconded?
I'll second that.
Terry moves, Rick seconds.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Buckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Nancy Cupca?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Student transportation.
As the board is aware, we need to hire a new transportation vendor, and I'll let Mark discuss the process and recommendation.
Okay, well, in deference to Mr. Mattoon, who's not here tonight, it went from a marathon-
He's here, it's Mr. Davenport.
I'm sorry, Davenport, oh, sorry, Keith.
We're all vertical.
Yeah, went from a marathon in terms of working with the current vendor, trying to figure out the particular issues that we're experiencing this year, as you recall, we had a pretty bad startup with this contract two years ago, and last year was, was actually pretty good, and then this year, chronic issues again, which were very hard for us to finally get to the bottom of what it was, other than, we knew there was some shortages, we didn't know how bad the shortages were, until we got into the winter. And actually, some of the surface, some of the problems were sporadic, so there wasn't, there wasn't always a chronic problem, but it, after the break, they just became a little bit more sporadic, but, I mean, more constant. And so, then we went into a sprint, really, in March, when the current vendor indicated that he felt it would be in our best interest to, and probably his, to, to go to a bid, outside bid for this work, which is not something we were anticipating. Last time, when we did this, bid this contract, we had it out in December and January, which gives a prospective bidder a lot more time. And so, you have a larger number of possible bidders who could look at this and find land within five miles of the district, possibly put up a terminal, and buy 80 to 100 buses, hire 100 people, you know, so, it's quite an undertaking, and so, we, again, went to full-out sprint to try and get this here in front of you today, and I apologize that you just got the formal memo today, but I hope you had a little bit of a heads-up, knowing what was going on. And so, our recommendation really is to change vendors, we did have two bids, three people, or three companies did come to the mandatory meeting to discuss the issues, and learn about the request for proposal, and one indicated to us that he just didn't have the time to set up that terminal. And the other vendor, other than the incumbent that bid on it, does have, and still was, he was our provider before, before we changed to this last vendor, and still had the terminal in district, and is going to be able to use that, so it was an advantage that that company had to, in terms of being able to bid on this. And we've been working, again, even right up till through this weekend, a little bit, fine-tuning some things, because it was such a rush, that to protect themselves, the companies, and possibly the incumbent as well, just really hit the rates hard, and gave us some big increases. We took, we did meet with the one vendor that I'm recommending to you tonight on Thursday, and kind of pulled apart the numbers, they've been very open about how they put together their bid, and are willing to work to fine-tune it as we go forward, very possibly even, just for the sake of a contractual matter, to bring you a revised agreement in the next coming months here. But at this point, we need to approve this contract, so they can mobilize, they need to buy buses, or, it's, there's, it's usually a four-month lag to get buses, they've located a vendor that they, and they have a hold on some buses, and so, we'd like to get approval tonight. We, we'll take a pretty good hit in the budget, I think when we're all, when it's all said and done, I think our net cost probably will go up about $250,000. I'm kind of happy to, tonight, along with presenting the insurance benefits, the fact that our PPOs are not changing at all, and just our HMOs are going up a little, which is, you know, that's, that's another savings, I mean, just so you, we don't, because it's going to be a tough budget year, no matter what, but I want to, there are some big swings in our budget already, that can help us with this, there's also some other, you know, technology things that we're adding to the budget, but, but I think, overall, this won't rattle us too hard, I think we'll be able to still come back to you with a balanced budget. But, so, it's not what's something we were expecting, but it's something that I think we just have to deal with right now and approve, and so, my recommendation is to approve the contract, the low bid, not low bid, actually, we're not required to do a low bid, but I don't think that would have been much of an issue anyways. So, we would recommend that you approve the bid by First Student Incorporated, for the next three years of transportation contract, and the last two years are subject to CPI increases.
Mark, do I understand that there's just, there's still the effort to bring the three districts together?
Yes, the other two districts have indicated, it's their full intention to also support First Student in this regard, so, that's pretty clear, I think.
Which would bring us more efficiencies?
Well, I mean, their initial bid included something like 13 or 14 new, you know, more buses than we're currently doing, and meaning that you'd have some buses that are purely dedicated to one route, and not being able to be used back and forth with other districts. We've had a meeting Thursday, and then again, through some emails and other things through the weekend, think it's going to be no more than, you know, eight, and probably, I'm thinking it's going to be even less than that, I think we'll be able to, but, those are yet to be seen, I think we have some real clear things that we understand will be lessened, the original bid, when we get down into-
That's good.
It's hard to say efficient, but I think it'll be more efficient than the original bid here, and we just think, the systems that they use will provide us with a better, better mapping and better routing that we're using right now.
Thanks.
Mark, prior to our agreement with the other two districts and Westway, were we not with First Student?
Yes, we were.
So, what has changed in the last two or three years that gives you the confidence that, that made us leave them in the first place?
Well, it was a very close bid at that point, and the, I think, I think everything's relative. The service that we've received from First Student was not perfect, I mean, but it, but it wasn't so bad, we've, I guess, we've actually experienced a very bad service, so I guess we know how the grass wasn't greener on the other side, we've, we've had administrators that have devoted full days to dealing with parents that are irate about busing, and so, we've had that now for a couple years, I mean, two out of the three, and, and the recollection at the building level is that it's never been this bad, and so, and, and they have shown us some of their systems that they use, we're more familiar, they're going to use some routing systems that we think are nationally well-taken and used, and, so, if nothing else, we're committed to working more closely with them, to make sure that we don't have, you know, substandard service, we have parents that are very tired of poor bus service, and it's, I would say there's many routes that did run okay, but there's some chronic routes that just, some kids and some groups and some buses just were not dependable for them, and from their perspective, every bus is bad, because it's the only one they know, and it's not showing up when they need it to be there, and, and so, they have a right to be very upset, and we're very upset about it, so, we'll be working more closely with them. I think I mentioned to them, I learned 10 times in the last three years, more than what I knew at the beginning, and I still think it's only one-tenth of what the professionals know, but I know enough now to know how to police it and to work through some of the issues.
And then, given the, you know, the lateness of this agreement, obviously, I think, you know, they have us more over a barrel, you know, because of that cost, you know, situation, what assurances have, have you been given in writing, you know, contractual language that will guarantee, you know, these new efficiencies, and the commitment that our parents and our administrators, you know, expect and demand?
Well, I mean, they do have a formal proposal, which indicates the systems that they'll use, we did meet with them, we don't have it in writing right now, exactly, we are meeting tomorrow with the other two districts, all three of us are going to agree, because some of this will be dependent upon all three of us coordinating and doing some things, and we, we've always been willing to do that, this, we have a very good relationship with our two feeders, no one is, is willing to do something as dramatic as changing bell times to where, and that, we've looked at that in the past anyways, it doesn't really help, it just shifts the problem from AM to PM, so, there's, there's not a lot we can do in that regard, but, nothing, honestly, Keith, nothing in writing right now, this is kind of a, you're right, we do have, in many ways, our back up against the wall on this issue, we do think that we're moving in the right direction with this group, though.
And finally, is there, irrespective of that contract language, is there a trigger that gets us out, if this increased service that we've been experiencing over the last two years continues, whether it's, obviously, we hope it's not with them, but if something like that arises again? like that arises again?
Right. There's a 120-day termination clause, so we could get out of it. And new to this contract, they're proposing that they have that same right, which we, I think most attorneys would say, if you do it one way, you have to do it both sides. So they have a lot of school districts that they serve in the western suburbs. I think they're very proud of their name. Their representatives are here tonight. So I think, I don't think, I don't expect this group, and they've not pulled the rug out from anybody else, so I don't think that's going to happen.
Thank you.
And I think it was established that there aren't that many vendors out there anyway, right?
Not in this area, really.
It is large.
They can handle this big of a group.
Right.
It's a very complex arrangement.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move that we go into a contract with First Student.
I'll second it.
Terry moves. Julia seconds.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good work.
Good work. We'll be watching. Renewal of the treasurer's services?
Mark, do you want to review this again?
I'm sorry.
This is Mark Stalen's show.
Treasure services.
Oh, treasurer's service. Sorry, what's going on here? We've used Eric Wagner as a, he's a CPA. I think we have had two treasurers overall in the district since I've been here. Mr. Wagner does take our, all of our monthly information and does an independent compilation. That's what you see in the board packet every month. So he verifies, it's one of the internal controls that we have. It's a very inexpensive service, really. Some districts do this in-house, which is kind of a conflict, but it's more of a superficial review. So I like the external aspect of this for the value. And so I would recommend that we continue this arrangement with Eric Wagner, agreed to do it at a very reasonable cost increase, less than two percent each year.
I'm glad that we do it externally, too. I'm not in favor of doing it internally. I think that's why, I think there's been people, and we have all received some solicitations about having an external auditor, just, you know, things that are happening in the world today. This is, you know, $750 a month, but, I mean, it does add up. And I think I've asked this maybe every year, why we use the same person. I'm not saying that we shouldn't, but I wonder sometimes if it is better to get somebody different. So there's a different set of eyes, an outside set of eyes.
Well, I mean, we absolutely can do that. I think the independent audit is something I think that would, is really where you have considered and asked us to consider rotating that. That's really where your independence is in terms of the true costs of the district. This is, you know, we can, we could possibly do that. There's not a lot of treasurers that have school district experience or CPAs that even have it, other than auditors themselves, and they don't want to do this stuff in the summer when they're busy. So we could find a CPA who would do this. We'd have to teach them how to do it. And then I don't know how experienced that person would be, if we're teaching them, showing them how to do it. I don't know if that's really independent. This individual has done this for many other, well, several other school districts, I shouldn't say many, and just knows what to look for when he's compiling the data, so.
Well, I ask the questions more in the form of just having the public understand exactly what we're doing, even though I ask the same question every year, probably. But, you know, that's why I wanted to ask it, was so that we could make an explanation as to why we would use the same person and the same set of eyes. My guess, playing devil's advocate, I would just say that if you're using the same person, they're pretty comfortable with you or the processes of the district. But on the other hand, I'm wondering if that's good. I mean, you know, if they're, it'd be like somebody just trusting you all the time and then just saying, you know, they're not really doing their due diligence, or says that the school district has never really been in any kind of trouble, and so they just say, you know, a little pat on the shoulder, and yeah, I looked at everything and it looks all great. So, and those are my questions. I mean, I just want to make sure that things are being done the way that the public would want us to have it done, and really being, sort of, really auditing what we're doing.
Well, yeah, okay. I mean, he's not truly an auditor, but he is somebody who's an external, he's not really there trying to find what an auditor might be looking for. He's more looking to see if we reported transactions consistently, and just another set of eyes and a quick, like having someone else reconcile your account. We don't rotate those internal jobs around. We have the same person who reconciled it every month. In that regard, we could move that to somebody else in the district and say, have a different person in the district reconcile the accounts. That might be, feel like it's going to be a positive thing, but I think it's more likely that that new person would miss something. And so I have a high confidence level with him, but I have no problem at all, if the board would like me to put it out and look for a different treasurer, we have time to do that. We could do a one-year contract with this gentleman and do that for next year if the board wanted us to move to a different treasurer, so.
We have an external auditor as well.
Yes.
And we've had that same one, too.
I know, I see your point.
It was just a due diligence question. It wasn't meant to be like a, you know.
No, no.
Something better. It was just a due diligence question.
You have to have, ultimately, the board has to have comfort level in the individual. If you don't have that comfort level, or if you would like it reviewed, we can do that. That's not a, you know, a big thing. It's up to you.
Now, with the new business, associate business manager, how will this, is there any overlap there?
Well, we are going to change just our internal functions. We are going to move some of the reconciliation functions to, but on a permanent basis, not just every month or anything, but to some of the other individuals in the business office. Because that person will have some of the duties that my current assistant has, because we're not going to replace her directly. We're going to move someone else who's going to take over some of the key jobs that my current assistant has. And I also have an accountant. And the accountant is the person that the business official will be replacing directly. But we're moving some things from my assistant to that business manager, some of those roles, and spreading a few of the other jobs to different people in the office as well. So we will have different people reconciling and reviewing reconciliations of the business manager. That person will still be doing the first step, but then we'll have other people reviewing her work, and it'll be different people. But that'll be a permanent change in their job description.
Other questions or discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll move the renewal of the treasurer's services as they've been recommended.
Second?
Second.
Julia motions? Terry seconds?
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to policy committee report, second reading.
Oh, boy, look at this.
Yeah, we have the second, and we have the first. And the policy, we meet again on May 1st. So the second ones have been up for one reading, and now they're up for the second. So you've had them.
Want to motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to.
Approve all of them?
Approve the board policies as presented for the policy committee report, second reading.
I'll second that, and they don't need to be enumerated, right, for the minutes?
I can. The policy committee will present the policies. 8.10, connection with the community. 8.20, community use of school facilities. 8.30, visitors to and conduct on school property. 8.40, diplomas for veterans. 8.70, accommodating individuals with disabilities. 8.80, gifts to the district. 8.95, parental involvement. 8.100, relations with other organizations and agencies. 8.110, public suggestions and concerns. 4.170, safety slash convicted child sex offender notification laws.
Second.
Rick moves. Keith seconds. I believe we can do a verbal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Moving on, new business, policy committee report, first reading.
Okay, these were the next policies that were reviewed at our meeting on March 27th. And so we're just up, any discussion, any concerns? We're meeting again, like I said, May 1st, so.
And as you can see from this list, they're in section one, two, four, five, seven, and eight. So this is a.
A hodge.
Direct manifestation of reviewing the press and.
Right.
Adjusting our policies or making recommendations to change them.
How many of these are just maybe one or two words?
We don't know. I wouldn't know off the top. We, I'm sure there are some.
I'm just curious.
Some would fall under maybe that umbrella.
Yeah.
Policy, but we won't start the umbrella till after the May 1st.
Okay.
So these, I think, should go through the traditional way that we've been passing them.
And then you're done with the book thus far?
We have three left.
Three?
Three policies that we have to review.
Oh, my goodness.
Right. We're close.
Actually, we have a new section, section nine, about sort of social media, electronic communications.
Oh, okay.
New section, because they only went up to eight before, yeah.
Right. So, but we're close. But I think these should go through the typical process. I do.
I think we're all done.
Right. And I think May 1st, anything out of that committee could maybe be slid underneath the new heading of minor tweaks, changes.
Okay.
I think that would probably be best.
Okay. Sounds good. I'm all for that.
Okay. So if nobody has any questions right now or comments?
I have one. I noticed on the, just for future reference, with regard to the school district elections and the school board types of activities.
2.30?
Yeah. I think it was school district elections. No, I'm sorry, that wasn't it. It was, anyway, I noticed that we don't, I'm not sure we have a policy that covers how the board handles replacing someone who leaves the board in the middle. And if you could take a look at that. I noticed that there's other issues that cover elections, but that one was not.
Seems to me we do, because we.
Oh, we did, because we've had to do it.
Right. We do have one.
Four or five years ago.
Yeah. And I looked it up. I tried to find it under policies, and I couldn't find it.
About to find it.
It's just a matter.
Maybe it would be one that we could maybe pull out and bring forth again, just to see how many years it has been since.
Yeah, just take a look at it.
We have looked at it.
Hopefully, we won't have to worry about it ever.
Wipe the dust off of it and.
Exactly.
And see.
I know we've had to deal with it, so there's a policy.
Reading the old English.
With the wax seal.
Lot of good stuff here, my goodness. All right.
Any other questions? No? Okay, get back to Rick or to Mike prior to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Communications and announcements, Lend.
Reception of the visitors.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. I was getting too far ahead of myself. Second, reception of visitors. Would anybody like to address the board on any subject? Hearing none? We'll now go on to communications and announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Cupka. We have no report. We'll be having our meeting very shortly, and we'll have a report afterwards.
Okay. Sessid.
If I could add to that, I'm sorry. My apologies. There is a Lend dinner coming up, and the topic of that dinner is the, sort of, a lot of information about the park assessment. And I'm in two organizations, two organizations that are sponsoring the dinner. One is the, was Lend, the other is the high school district organization. And I think that would be a very good thing for the board to attend if possible, because there's quite a bit of information regarding park that is perplexing to some of us, in part, and I've tried to share some of that with the board, the number of tests that have to be given, the timeframe, some of the other issues with implementation, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we know the dates?
April 30th.
April 30th.
Ms. Nyadik is still taking reservations.
I have mine in.
I miss him.
Sessid is meeting Wednesday, so I will have a report after that. And the same is true of the Illinois Humanities Council, they're meeting Thursday. So I'll have more to say after this week.
Thank you, Julia. District 99 Education Foundation?
Well, if you, I think you still have about an hour to make it to the burger wars at Tom and Eddie's. So if we get out of here in ten minutes, you still have time to go across town. But for those of us who have gone already, today, we had four wonderful burgers, and we will know tomorrow the winner of those burger wars. And 10% of the proceeds for tonight's take at Tom and Eddie's will be going to the foundation. So that's a good thing.
And that's the Tom and Eddie's in New Yorktown?
Yes, it is. And so that's about it.
Okay. Illinois Association of School Boards?
Nothing really too new out of that. I just would like to have everybody start thinking about if we are interested in all, if there's something on the docket about a resolution. Now is the time to be submitting those to the IASB Resolution Committee for consideration for voting in that in November at the conference. And then two other things not related to IASB. One, a big shout-out to our very own Mike Davenport, who ran in the Boston Marathon today. We don't know how he did yet, but I'm sure he's been training very hard for that, so just wanted to mention that. And then on another note, too, I just want to say, since we're talking about communications and announcements, I'm continuously impressed with your on-the-mark that is sent out to all the colleagues in the district. I really, truly think that what you've added and what Jill is writing is just the most informative piece to our staff and to the rest of us. I think it just keeps everybody right on board with what is going on, not only locally within our school, but the community, and then also all with legislative issues in the state and even federal ones, too. So I just want to give a big shout-out to Jill and to you, Mark, for adding all those things to that communication piece.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll go through the upcoming meetings. We will have a meeting on May 5th. There'll be a special meeting here at the ASC at 7:00 PM. On May 12th, we will have the special recognition in open house at North High School at 6:30. Please come, even if you don't have a student being recognized. There's wonderful cookies, and you get to talk to us. May 19th, we have the regular business meeting back here at the ASC at 7:30.
And then graduation.
And graduation will be coming up on June 6th.
June 6th.
And who's going first this year?
South.